Good evening. This, the 39th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. If you have cell phones, we're going to actually put them on vibrate or turn them off. Tonight's invocation will be led by Minister Bell of Greater Paradise Christian Center. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come together once again. And Father, we thank you for our city, the beautiful city of Baltimore. We ask you, God, that you continue to lead us and guide us. Thank you for our City Council President. Thank you for each and every member of this council. We thank you for your continued guidance in this beautiful place. For that, God, we give you all praise and honor and glory. It's in your Son Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Nicole Fall and Alexis Ray of Baltimore Clayworks, who wants to share with us the wonderful things that they do.
Hi. Thank you very much for having us. And we've given you folders, talk about our programs, and a little piece of clay for you to touch because that's what it's all about. It's like getting a hold of clay. As you probably, as you may know, we offer programs, we offer classes, we have art exhibitions, really world-class, and we bring artists from other countries like Taiwan and Korea. What's really important that we really want you to know, and I think a lot of you know this already, is that we work in community. We want to bring clay to everyone. And I just would like to tell you about a number of the places where we're currently working. We're working at the House of Ruth with mothers and children, offering clay classes. Walter P. Carter Recreation Center in Govens. Step-by-step in Park Heights for addiction recovery. The Ark Baltimore. Those students with developmental disabilities come to us and we have classes with them. And also, the Evening Reporting Center of the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services. So, we really work to really bring clay to everyone. And I'd like to introduce you to Alexis Ray. She is a recent graduate of Morgan State, and she is our camp counselor.
Yes. Thank you. Our camp director, sorry.
Thank you for having us again. I do know that we are all not artists in here, but everyone does have a part of creativity in them. And if you have children or know children, Baltimore Clayworks is definitely a place to be. Not only is it an art-based camp where you're working and honing on skills all day, but it's a therapeutic experience. And at such a young age, starting at six, it allows you to figure out what you do like and don't like as a child. I definitely think it's a great experience. We're also working with outside communities, such as Key &amp; Powers in St. Francis Neighborhood Center, to make sure that everybody does get a chance to be creative and express all abilities at Clayworks. So, I think that anyone in here with a creative feel should definitely come and visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all that Claywork does with our various organizations. I have a little piece that I made that's in my office a couple of years ago. So, I might come check you out and make some more stuff. All right. Maybe invite the council over so we all can come over and see it. Okay? Because they do great work, y'all. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation acts for motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Henry. Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We're now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the proceedings from the June 23rd City Council meeting is on council members' desks.
Motion to approve the journal. Motion by Council Scott. Second by Councilmen Schleifer. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to currate the journal is adopted. Resolution to be introduced. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a City Council resolution can be introduced from the floor.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending rules, allow for the introduction of a City Council resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to currate, the rules are suspended and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 18-0091R.
City Council Resolution 18-0091R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Police Department, for the purpose of calling for a monthly budget oversight hearings for the Baltimore Police Department regarding staffing, payroll, and overtime to improve transparency and accountability, and the allocation of more than $500 million in public funding for the vital task of protecting Baltimore's residents. Sponsors, Pinkett.
Please note, Council President Young is the co-sponsor. Councilman Scott, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Snead, Councilmember Stokes, and Councilmember (laugh) Costello. Did I get everybody? Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all the co-sponsors. It goes without saying that the Baltimore Police Department garners a lion's share of the monies allocated to the city's general fund, to the tune, as the resolution says, of over half a billion dollars, a figure that already inhibits our ability to support other much-needed services in the city. Making matters even more challenging is the fact that, for the past several years, at the end of every budget cycle, this one included, we've also been faced with an additional request in the range of $20 million to address increasing overtime expenditures related to the police department. These requests come without sufficient opportunity for the council to make recommendations or to encourage the implementation of strategies to address these expenditures. Calling for this monthly monitoring of the Baltimore Police Department's budget affords us the opportunity to analyze the accuracy of the budget and the measures that are being incorporated to maintain it. And many would say, why do we need this? We already have quarterly budget hearings. And as Councilman Costello, the chair of the Budget Committee, can attest, that even with this last budget cycle, by the time we reached our first quarterly milestone, the police department was already at a $17 million deficit as it relates to overtime expenditures. We, as a city, cannot continue to operate like this. There are too many other services that require these resources that are going strictly to overtime. It's time for the police department to address this in a systematic way, to address the structural issues related to this overtime. And if not, we, as a council, need to rise up and address it further. So, thank you to all the colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman, for this resolution, and we're looking forward to the hearing. I've been saying that for the last 10, 15 years, that the police department have an open checkbook, and we need to close their checkbook. And I don't want anybody to think this is anti-police, but it's bringing them in line with the budget that they have so that we can fund other agencies that need the money just as well as the police department. We should be proactive rather than being reactive. And I want to thank you for introducing the resolution. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Good, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a City Council resolution can be introduced from the floor.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of suspending rules, Councilman Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The resolution should be introduced as Resolution 18-0092R. That's it.
City.
I'll never read that, okay. This has been assigned to Budget and Probation Committee. All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. We're going to do it over.
City Council Resolution 18-0092R, Monthly Council Stat Meetings for Baltimore City Police Department, for the purpose of calling for the Baltimore City Police Department to participate in monthly council stat meetings in order to provide more frequent legislative oversight into the department's fight to reduce crime in Baltimore. Sponsors, Scott.
Please note, Council President Young is the co-sponsor. Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Snead, Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Cohen, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Henry, and of course, the sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, council members, as you know, the Public Safety Committee, since my first term on the council and as vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, has conducted quarterly oversight hearings with the police department. But after confering with my colleagues from the Budget Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett and Councilman Costello, and from the Public Safety Committee, in seeing the level of violence that we continue to see in the city of Baltimore, we think that we have to hold the police department to the fire for both its budget and its mission every day, and that's to reduce violence in the city of Baltimore more frequently. Yes, while today, I'm standing here, and we have 143 homicides in the city of Baltimore, and that's yes, that's less than the 183 that we had at the same time last year, that's still not good enough because there's still much more than we had in 2014. There's still much more than we had in 2011. And we want us to be winning the Super Bowl every year. We can't keep comparing ourselves to last year. We know that last year was the worst year in history for the city of Baltimore. And we know, while other agencies are not holding the police department accountable the way that they should do, the council will have to fill that void, and that starts with us, and that starts with the Council Public Safety Committee. And I look forward to having these hearings back-to-back with the Budget Committee each month to make sure that we're doing our part in holding the police department accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for this resolution, and we look forward for the coordinated meetings with the Budget Department as well. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a City Council resolution can be introduced from the floor.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules for introduction of a resolution from the floor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 18-0093R.
City Council Resolution 18-0093R, The Reunification of Families, for the purpose of calling on the federal government to immediately reunify all families separated under the zero-tolerance immigration policy, to end contracts with private prisons in jurisdictions benefiting from the incarceration of families, and to reconstitute and repropose ICE, calling on Governor Hogan in the state of Maryland to ensure no state resources are used to separate families, and calling on jurisdictions around the state to disentangle local law enforcement from immigration enforcement, and for the purpose of expressing Baltimore's opposition to the separation and prolonged detention of families. Sponsors, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen. Can we get co-sponsors for this resolution? Can I say all council members? All council members. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through this resolution, the Baltimore City Council calls on the Department of Homeland Security to immediately reunify all of our families. We call for an end to the Trump administration's policy of separating children from their parents at the border or in Baltimore. Finally, we call on our governor, Governor Hogan, to follow our city's lead by refusing to use state law enforcement resources to assist ICE in dividing families. We understand the need for border security, but this president's policies represent an assault on family values. As a city that has suffered more than enough tragedy, we will not be complicit in causing further anguish to children or parents. I spoke to a pastor recently who told me about a man who came to Baltimore with his family to escape violence in Honduras. He worked, he contributed, and he sent his children to our schools. He was living a happy and peaceful existence in southeast Baltimore. Just over a year ago, ICE agents arrested and deported him back to Honduras. Three months later, he was murdered outside of his home. And just today, a mother of five went in for her regularly scheduled asylum check-in and was detained and now faces deportation. She's been living here for 10 years, she owns her home, and according to her daughter, she came here to escape domestic violence back in Honduras. As the grandson of refugees, I know that people come here to escape from violence. As a new father, I would die to protect my daughter. I can't begin to imagine the pain and anguish of being forcibly separated from her. No one should know that pain. Tomorrow is the court order deadline for the Trump administration to reunite all parents with their children under the age of five. So, we say to President Trump, bring our families back together now. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules to immediately adopt this resolution, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent.
Move the resolution.
All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. You can find the consent counter.
Thank you.
You can find the consent counter in Section 8, at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion?[930.13][930.13](applause) You can find the consent counter in Section 8, at the back of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent counter? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries, and this counter is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move to read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor, short title for the remainder of the meeting, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to the special guests from Black Classic Press.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Okay, we're going to call Damani. Is he here? Okay, welcome. For the past 40 years, the Baltimore region has been home to a national treasure that has supplied the world with thought-provoking literature from a diverse array of writers across the African continent. Located less than 10 miles from Baltimore City Hall, inside a suburban office park sits a classic printing press that has been responsible for resurrecting and distributing works by legendary scholars like W.E.B. Du Bois, J.A. Rogers, and Cardigy Woodson, to name a few. And this is no small feat. In a country where it was illegal for descendants of Africans to read and write, Black Classic Press has been a national leader in publishing lost literary gems. I'm proud to join my colleagues in celebrating Mr. Paul Coats, the founder and director of Black Classic Press, for his 40 years of service to our country as a publisher of African and African-American literature. Mr. Coats is traveling, oh, he's here now, okay. But we're pleased to have his children, Christians, Coats and son, Damani Coats, who are actively involved in Black Classic Press, and are thankful for following in their father's footsteps. Please join me in welcoming them to Baltimore City Hall as we present Mr. Coats and his family with a City Council Resolution celebrating the 40th anniversary of Black Classic Press.[1064.42][1064.42](applause) Okay. City Council. Counting. Counting members. Counting members. Counting. 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 Let's give him another hand. I didn't know he was going to make it, but he made it, anyway.[1208.23][1208.23](applause) We'll now move the bills on second reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0259, Fire Code, Repelling Appendix D.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a letter today from Baltimore City Fire Department. Per our previous request, after discussing that letter with both you, Mr. President, and Councilman Dorsey, chief sponsor of the legislation, we do feel that the Fire Department has followed through on our request to get final resolution on those four development projects, as well as the Maryland Cathedral Cycle Track. What we're going to be asking for in advance of the August 6th council meeting, our understanding is that the Fire Department has been meeting with other agency representatives. We're asking for recommendations in writing from the Fire Department on final resolution to these development project issues, as well as these cycle track infrastructure issues, whether that be recommendations for legislative remedy, or some type of executive order from the mayor, or policy change. We leave that, at this point, up to the Fire Department to make those recommendations to the City Council. So, with that, Mr. President, I move to hold the bill on second reader until the August 6th City Council meeting.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries this bill, we want it on second reader at the August 6th City Council meeting. Land Use and Transportation. Oh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman, you speaking on that, Councilwoman?
I am, and I voted for holding it. Mr. President, members of the council, I will not be here on the 6th of August. I will be away. So, I just would like to say the following. I support the legislation. I very much support the efforts being made by the committee to come to resolution on specific current issues in many of our districts. But issues will arise after this, and I think that what the legislation does is certainly wise. It doesn't just abandon a regulation, it substitutes one that is more in keeping with complete streets and more in keeping with where this progressive council is going. But I won't be here to vote if a vote is taken at that time. And that's why I'm standing now to say, one of the issues at hand is in my district. It's progressing, but it will never be the last issue that comes up that requires this kind of attention and this kind of compromising and without compromising safety. And so, I would ask my colleagues and the president, and especially the chairman, to thank you for the way you are handling this. I think it's very productive, frankly, but that the principle itself that was voted on is an important one for the future of the city, and I think a very safe and conservative one in terms of safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0187, Zoning Use Regulation, Live Entertainment.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chair is serving jury duty today, I have the results of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Three bills were heard on June 27th, 2018, and we're going to do one at a time?
Absolutely.
Okay. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion abstained. Please note that Councilman Dorsey abstained. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 18-0209, Zoning Code Modifications.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The committee heard this bill on June 27th, 2018. Amendments are on council members' desks. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve. Please note, Councilwoman Clark, as a nay. This bill is amended. You'd like to, what'd you say, Councilwoman? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
This is supposed to be a technical correction of, this bill is supposed to be technical corrections, basically, of the transform that we adopted back in, that became effective June 5th, 2018. It goes far beyond that, and I take, I got voted down on every amendment I put forward, which is not unusual. But I'd like to speak just why I cannot vote, some of the reasons I cannot vote for this bill that I find to be of substance, and not, and bills, and issues that should have been subject to separate legislation and separate hearings. And I'll just mention a couple. I know it's a pain, but we did, in the last council, require that the zoning board hold at least one 5:00 hearing every two months for people who have to work during the day and can't come down to, for example, protest something that might be in their neighborhood. We're all familiar with that happening to people. That has been struck as a requirement. Site review committee hearings in the Planning Commission, environmental review meetings with developers in the Planning Commission are very important to the final development plan communities are presented with. But in the transform, we said, not that the public could testify, because it's the developer meeting with the agencies about the site plan, about the environmental issues, et cetera. But we said that, basically, they had to be open to the public, and they had to provide notice to the public that we were going to have those meetings, and people could come, but they couldn't testify. And that's fair enough, but they should be transparent. In the variance, in the zoning board section, we have standards. If you go seeking a variance because your property, because your property's too small for the development you want to build, for example, that's a major one. Or you want something higher in the air than the law provides, you got to go to the zoning board, and there's a test. In this case, with variances, it's a big deal.
Madam, Councilwoman, can you wrap it up, please?
I will, Mr. President, and I apologize. I want people to understand.
You abstained, and I still gave you a chance to say, so we need to move on.
I thank you very much for that leave, and I'm on my last issue that I am going to discuss. Variances are different from other actions in the zoning board because the weight is on a developer and a development to demonstrate that it does not do certain harm to the environment, the air, the light, the community. And there are certain tests that have been in the zoning code since 1971 that were in transform, that are now being taken out in these amendments. So, Mr. President, with all due respect, those are only a few of the reasons I'm not voting for these amendments, and therefore unable to vote for this bill. Thank you for the time to explain.
Thank you, Councilman, Chair Recognized.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Please note that Councilman Scott, Councilman Henry, Councilman Mary, Pat Clark, as a nay. This bill moves to third reader. I want to remind councilpeople, Council Rule 5 dash 6, where it says, no council member may take longer than five minutes to explain his or her vote. I want y'all to be mindful of that. Chair Recognized Counsel Vice President Middleton.
Did you read the next bill?
He's gonna read it.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0210, Zoning Conditional Use Amending Ordinance, 16 dash 469.
Chair Recognized Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also heard this bill on June 27th, 2018. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Counselwoman Clark. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 17 dash 0002R, Coordinated Agency Violence Reduction Strategy.
Chair Recognized Counselman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. On July 2nd of this year, the Public Safety Committee had a voting session on two resolutions that we had previously heard, this one and the next one. Mr. President, I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve, this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0070R, Informational Hearing, Crisis Preparedness and Safety in Our Schools.
Chair Recognized Counselman Scott.
Mr. President, I move the revolution, resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion to approve, this resolution is adopted. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0199, Charter Amendment, Office of the Inspector General. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0200, City Property Renaming Radaki Park to Wealth Series Fields at Radaki Park. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0215, Maryland Department of Transportation, County Transportation Revenue Bonds, Series 2018. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0216, City Property Renaming Ambrose Kennedy Park to Henrietta Lacks Educational Park. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0222, Charter Amendment Equity Assistance Fund. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0223, Equity Assessment Program. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0228, Issuance of Revenue Obligation Stormwater Projects. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0229, Charter Amendment Fair Election Fund. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 02551, Obstructing Traffic in an Intersection, $125 Fine. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0264, Charter Amendment, Charter Commission General Recommendations. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement, Chair Recognized Vice President Middleton. Oh, you got something to say? Oh, I'm going across. Chair Recognized Vice President Middleton.
Doing this one for the Land Use and Transportation Committee first, we will hear Bill Number 18 dash 0255, September 12th, 2018, at 1:00 PM here in council chambers, rezoning certain properties in the Old Goucher Community. Then we have the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. We'll hear City Council Bill 18-0221, Thursday, September 20th, 10:00 AM here in council chambers. And this is the cert, the dedicating the surtax proceeds to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then also in the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, we will hear Bill Number 18 dash 0189, Thursday, July 19th, 2018, 11:00 AM here in council chambers. And that's the Short Term Residential Rental Regulation and Taxation.
Chair Recognized Counselman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee, on Monday, July 16th, proceeding a hearing that's already scheduled, will hold a legislative oversight hearing. The committee will hold a hearing on the maintenance of paper alleys and streets, requesting the Department of Transportation, Department of Recreation Parks, and Public Works, along with the Law Department, to report to the council on the maintenance of paper streets and alleys in Baltimore. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rules 10 dash 2 and 10 dash 3 to announce hearings on a resolution introduced this year.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those, all those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to have, Chair Recognized Counselman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing for Council Resolution 18 dash 0092R. That's the monthly council stat meetings for Baltimore City Police Department, introduced tonight. The first will be August the 13th, at 5:05 PM here in the Du Berne's chambers. We will also hold a hearing for the same resolution, 18 dash 0092R, on September the 5th, here in the Du Berne's chambers, at 5:05 PM, and on October the 2nd, at 2:05 PM here, all here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Counselman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September 27th, at 5:00 PM, the Education and Youth Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing investigating the impacts of concentrated poverty in our schools, for the purpose of investigating the impacts of concentrated poverty on Baltimore and our schools, to discuss their import as we head into the Kerwin Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcement? Chair Recognized Counselman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, July 23rd, at 4:15 PM. This is legislative oversight on African American Heritage Festival funding, requesting representatives from the Department of Finance and the mayor's office come before the committee to discuss the funding for the African American Heritage Festival for the past five fiscal years. At the request of Councilman Scott, I move to suspend rules, just Rule 10-2, to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion to carry. Chair Recognized Counselman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, July 23rd, at 5:00 PM, to be televised on cable TV Channel 25. This is on City Council Bill 18 dash 0268, Ordinance of Estimates Fiscal Year 2019 Capital Contribution to the Operating Budget of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for Fiscal Year 2019, at the request of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Mr. President, colleagues, if you recall, there was a bit of a typo in the budget this year, and this is merely correcting that. Budget and Appropriations Committee will be holding hearing on Monday, July 23rd, at 5:01 PM, on Bill 18 dash 0266, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Fire Department in the Amount of $4 Million, at the request of the Department of Finance. Budget and Appropriations will hold a hearing on Monday, July 23rd, at 5:02 PM. Also televised on Channel 25, as is the previous one, on City Council Bill 18 dash 0265, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Police Department in the Amount of $21 Million, at the request of the Department of Finance. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Counselwoman Snead. All in favor of suspending rules, to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion to carry. Chair Recognized Counselman Costello.
Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, August 13th, at 5:00 PM, to be televised on cable TV Channel 25, on City Council Bill 18 dash 0091R, Budget Oversight Hearing for Baltimore Police Department. This is monthly oversight hearing, at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Move to suspend Rule 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry. Chair Recognized Counselman Costello.
Budget and Appropriations will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September 5th, at 5:00 PM, again on Council Resolution 18 dash 0091R, at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Move to suspend Rule 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion to carry. Chair Recognized Counselman Costello.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, Tuesday, October 2nd, 2:00 PM, 18 dash 0091R, Budget Oversight Hearing. Also, Mr. President, I wanted to thank you, and Councilman Scott, and Councilman Pinkett, for working so quickly today, to make sure that we got these important hearings scheduled. May I go to Judiciary next?
Sure can.
Thank you. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July 17th, at 1:00 PM. This is Council Bill 18 dash 0219, City Property, renaming the fire station located at 5714 Eastern Avenue to be the Constantine Previs Fire Station, at the request of Councilman Cohen. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July 17th, at 1:05 PM. This is Council Bill 18 dash 0253, City Property, naming the footbridge over Stony Run to be the Amy Mickle Footbridge, at the request of Councilwoman Clark. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July 17th, at 1:10 PM, on Council Bill 18 dash 0267, City Property, renaming Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School Building to Wildwood Elementary Middle School Building, at the request of Councilman Burnett. And I believe will be coming to you, Mr. President, to ask to double read that in order to get that name changed, in advance of the new school year, at the request of Councilman Burnett. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, August 7th, at 10:00 AM, on Council Bill 18 dash 0230, Ethics Code, Transparency and Lobbying Act, at the request of Councilman Cohen. And Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August 8th, at 5:00 PM, to be televised on cable TV Channel 25. On Council Bill 18 dash 0076R, Investigative Hearing, Physical Status in Municipal Conduit System, at the request of Council President Young. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore? Okay. Record announcement, I want to say happy birthday to Councilman Henry. August 2nd is his birthday, so we want to sing happy birthday to Councilman Henry. All right choir, let's go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilman Henry. Happy birthday to you. Before I recognize any other council members, you, you, you have an announcement? Okay. I want everyone to know that Shermaye, Shamaye Hinton Knight is with us today, and she is a young student who loves God and has big dreams for her life, and the lives of other young children in her community and nationwide. She became the 2018 Miss Heart of Charity Sweetheart Queen in March, but she has a lifelong goal of reaching people through song and dance, and at the age of four, Shermaye started giving back to her community by feeding the homeless and volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House. She sings, she does literary dancing, literature called dancing at the Ronald McDonald House, and she speaks French, and makes time to motivate young people to be their best. With her platform to the youth that through hard work, dreams do come true, she wants to one day be Miss Universe, and dance professionally in Paris. No matter how young you are, you can make a difference in your community, too. Her favorite saying is, with God, everything is possible. Let's give her a hand. Oh, she want to say something? Oh. Ho, ho, ho. We have to ask for floor privileges, because I didn't know she was, I thought we were just recognizing her.
Miss Universe of the Future.
Second by Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton. You may take the floor. What you gonna do, dance for us? Somebody give her a mic. Well, we always try to make time for our young people, because I wasn't aware of this, but today, so we're gonna give her an opportunity to speak.
I am your new 2018 Miss Heart of Charity Sweetheart Queen. I want to let any city youth know, if they work hard, their dreams will come true, too. No matter how young they are, they can make a difference in their community, too, like me, by feeding the homeless, volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House, and reading to our youth. I am Shamaye Hinton Knight. Thank you.
Before we do announcements, don't you all want to take a picture with her? All the councilpeople? Like to take a picture with her? Okay, who has the camera? Where's, um? Okay. Okay. announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I solemnly ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now 143 lives that we've lost in Baltimore, the homicides this year, and all of those that we continue to lose almost daily to the opioid crisis.
Counselman Dorsey. Counselman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I am really proud and pleased to report out about an initiative that my office took on to support arts in the 3rd City Council District. Over many months of meeting with community members involved in the arts, as well as arts and cultural leaders from across Baltimore City, we were able to put together an inclusive, and simple, and free grant application, open to cultural producers from within the Baltimore City Council District 3. And were able to, last weekend, hold a lottery to award grants to four artists in the 3rd District, each of whom will receive $3,000 to, to support their creative practice while living in the 3rd City Council District. Initiative we call Artist District, and, you know, hopefully we could do this in all 14 City Council Districts, maybe we could get some funding for it next year. But it was, it was really a fantastic event. We had 81 applicants, after a few disqualifications from people trying to apply from outside of the 3rd City Council District. We had 70-some applicants, and, and had a great event, where everybody showed up, and to really celebrate, and to meet one another. The arts and cultural community within Baltimore City is diverse and celebratory, and we, we ended up choosing three women, one man, two visual artists, a writer, and a musician. Chelsea Fetzer, writer. Who else did we choose? Scott Patterson, Christina, Scott Patterson, musician. Christina McCrery, visual artist, ceramicist. And Jackie Millard, visual artist who works on paper, all residents of the 3rd District. So I'm really thankful that we have the opportunity to support them, and look forward to doing it again next year.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Counselman Costello, then Councilman Burnett, and Counselman Snead. Who else had to handle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just colleagues and everyone watching at home, I wanted to remind you that Artscape is coming up, July 20th through the 22nd, and the 12th and the 11th Council Districts, so hopefully everyone can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Counselman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just rising to ask that we continue to keep seven-year-old Taylor in prayer, who was shot, and, over the weekend, and also all the other victims of violence across the city of Baltimore. But definitely keep her in prayer. I've got word she's showing signs of improvement, but still has a long road ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I did go to visit her on, I think it was Friday, I went to see her and her parents. Chair Recognized Counselman Pinkett. No, he, he claimed I didn't see him.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Just two brief announcements. The first, on Sunday, July 15th. The first, on Sunday, July 15th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the former William Penderhugh's Elementary School that's at 1200 North Fremont Avenue. My office is sponsoring what we're calling Summers in the 7th District, along with the Living Legacy Foundation. It's a major block party with food, music, resources, backpack giveaway for kids. We're excited about bringing the Living Legacy Foundation, an organ donation foundation to the community. Excited to bring those types of resources out. So, we're inviting everyone to come out and just have a good time celebrating. Secondly.
What date was that?
Sunday, July 15th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
You would do that when I'm gone, wouldn't you?
Okay, I'll check with your schedule next time. The second announcement is related to, for those who have had the opportunity to travel along Jewett Park Lake Drive over the last couple of weeks, I want to commend the Department of Transportation for partnering on an effort called Big Jump, where we were able to, at least at this point, put up temporary barriers to create a bike pedestrian path between Penn North all the way to Remington, and then looping back into the park. While it is a pilot, it is a critical, I think, step for the city. For too long, Jewett Hill Park has been almost inaccessible to many residents in West Baltimore, where we have almost eight lanes of traffic on some parts of it. And it's a shame that we have allowed for engineers to create almost a moat around one of our city's prized assets. And so, this is a step, I think a major step in the right direction, to really value our communities, improve health, and then also allow us to really improve those assets that really make Baltimore the city that we all love. So, if you have opportunity, Council President, we'd love for you to get on your bike. I'm inviting you out, so we can get on the Big Jump and show everybody how much fun it is. Thank you.
I'll take you up on it. You going to rent the bike for me? You going to rent the bike for me?
I'll rent the bike for you.
Just kidding. Chair recognizes Council, Councilman, boy, I'm getting Bullock. Councilman Bullock. Councilwoman Clark, did you have your hands up?
I just want to say.
Okay. You had yours up too, right Shannon? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to remember the life and the service of Reverend Dr. Reginald Lawrence, the longtime pastor of St. Mark's Institutional Baptist Church in the 9th District. He will actually be buried, and his funeral will be on Wednesday, so let's please keep his family and the community in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to ask the Vice President if she can remember the employees of the Gazette newspaper as a former journalist sitting in the newsroom. Just have you on my heart, so just add them to your list of family and friends. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should have paid better attention during our budget deliberations, and I apologize for that. I did not know until yesterday that our swimming pools are closed on Sundays unless they are located in a park. So, in other words, Clifton Park Pool was open, but if it was a pool that was not in a public park, it's closed on Sundays. Now, unless it's a code red. So, I inquired why a certain Walter P. Carter actually was closed yesterday, because I had a constituent who walked there from Edner Gardens with her children. And that's what I learned from the recreation director. So, what I would like to say is this. If people work five-day weeks, and a lot of people actually do, Saturdays and Sundays is when you can get the kids to the pool, and that's a day when a lot of them are closed. So, we're talking about some supplementary monies coming through and around, and it seems to me, right now, might be a really good way to spend them. My constituent, who lives in Edner Gardens, which is why I didn't get the 4th District involved in this, says she talked to someone in the governor's office who said, oh, we sent them the money for that, for to keep the pools open, and we don't know, but obviously they're not doing it, which is ridiculous. We didn't get that money for pools, that I remember. I did pay some close attention to the budget. So, I'd just like to say, hey, we're getting some money. It's hot, and it's July and August. How about some Sundays for all the pools if we can squeeze out the money to make that happen? Sorry to be late with the request. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope I haven't exceeded my five minutes.
You did by 13.6 seconds.
And if I were a councilman, would I have?
No, you didn't, Mary Pat. You say some of the men speak longer than you? I didn't know that the pools were not open on Sundays, so we'll get with the administration and try to figure out what happened, because I'm quite sure the mayor wanted the pools open for children to be able to go and swim, because I didn't know that. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen, the last speaker, by the way.
Second, Councilwoman's point about the pools being open, we've been waiting for two weeks to get O'Donnell Heights Pool open. Park, Wreckin' Park had promised that it would be open two weeks ago. It is still not open.
O'Donnell Heights?
Yep, the Boys and Girls Club in O'Donnell Heights. They have promised to get that pool open. It's hot, families want to swim. Would also ask the Vice President to keep Marta in all of our thoughts and prayers. She is potentially facing deportation. Marta, she's lived in this city, she's lived in Maryland for 10 years. She owns a home, she has five children here, and she was a survivor of domestic violence and was seeking asylum status, and has come here to get asylum and is now facing deportation. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The next council meeting will be held on August 6th, 2018, here in council chambers. And may we have a moment of silence and prayer. And first of all, just keep in our thoughts, Marta. But we do want to have a moment of silence and continual prayer for the families that are experiencing this opioid epidemic, and also for the families of the 143 homicides, also the family of Dr. Reginald Lawrence, and the employees of the Capital Gazette.
Thank you. There been no further business. This concludes the 39th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.